And I've read the minutes. I make a motion that we go ahead and accept the minutes as presented.
Further discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carried.
Did you go down to Burlington? Not Schumann girl much.
She's a pretty good ball player.
Yeah, she is. Girl's kinda surprised though.
Hi Bob.
This weather's not helping you out any, uh, Bob. Well, this morning I was out in my house, drinking a cup of coffee. I almost fell down three times. Two of them were inside my garage. The wet coming off my car. I went through town getting up the hill to my tractor. They slid off a couple people. I mean, they closed school. By the time they got to school, the kid just turned around and took them back home.
There you are, ma'am.
Hey, would I have to link with you finding that last week?
No, I didn't have it ready.
Great.
I'm behind. So I don't.
You need to call the sheriff.
If you need it, I don't have anything ready for you.
Oh, okay. Okay. I see. Okay.
Then the next one will be starting a new book and it'll be our first set from January.
Are you going tomorrow?
I sure am.
Did I?
Yeah. I just need info sometime today of where I need to go.
Didn't I send that to you?
You may have. I don't know.
You think you can, though, Tim?
I'll go. I'll go.
Oh, yeah? Well, great. Thank you.
God, that's been so long ago. I don't know. Who in the hell was I get that from? Keith Olson. There it is.
What's it say? I'm booked.
Keith Olson.
Olson?
There it is. Wind power meeting. Attorney General Schmidt on Wednesday, January 23rd at his office. 1:20 Southwest 10th in Topeka. Start time to 12:45. That works for you. General Schmidt.
Whose office? Dennis?
Schmidt.
Attorney General.
I wanted to give you more. We invite the Farm Bureau General Counsel.
Is there any other chairs back there?
Right here. Party one. George.
I'll forward that to you again.
I guess. I don't see any. I'm not sure I got it.
Pull that.
Yeah, I do. I got it. I think I do.
Yeah, I just sent it to you.
Okay. Yep, I got it.
Did you get all of them?
We can. You want a cup of coffee?
Ron Hurson. He's gonna be the two minutes.
We drink it till it's gone in there. That's all I know.
One of us ought to be there, but no. Did you? Would it make any difference if I... Because I may have to be in Topeka tomorrow.
I don't think it matters.
But when I get down there, I won't have any wheels. So...
Well...
I doubt that they want me to drive the semi downtown.
So it must be about a 45-minute scheduled meeting.
You think?
Well, he's got another meeting at 1:30 or something. It says here. 1:20 Southwest 10th. That we'll talk about later.
The high was today was two hours ago.
Mm-hmm.
It's 10 o'clock.
I'll take another peek, see if anybody's hiding out here.
So tomorrow's KAC day at the Capitol also?
No, I think it's Thursday. Ain't that right, Gary? Ain't that KAC deal at the Capitol? Isn't that Thursday?
It's the 24th.
You said the same day as...
No, it ain't the same day. They wanted it the same day.
Oh, they wanted the same day and they couldn't get it worked out.
They couldn't get it worked out.
Okay.
So, Tim, you know of anybody that's a block away or anything? Yeah, okay. Well, we'll just thank you all for coming. By way of an update, as per Mr. Neal, the footprint, wind turbine footprint and/or density study, both of which have been requested repeatedly, I think I can say, either this office, this courthouse, nor Mr. Neal's office have received such. So, I think safe and sane. We don't know too much more today than we did a week ago. We're waiting on those. Still don't have them. So, we'll at this time, however, open the floor for questions and/or comments for Dennis, Tim, or I, or Mr. Neal, or elect James, if you want to. Anything that I...
No, they have, uh, they have our proposal. I've discussed it two times with them, informally, a phone call. What we really want to see before we actively negotiate any of the provisions is the footprint. Where are you gonna, where do you want to be, right? And then the density study, which tells us how closely people are located within the area they're gonna, and where they're gonna put the turbines in relation to those people. That helps us assess whether, okay, was our first shot at the setback a good shot or a bad shot? The density study will tell us that. Along with other things, our goal, as we discussed last time, was also to put in areas where they cannot put turbines. And the footprint will let us get an idea of whether we're on the same sheet of music or if that's gonna be a hard discussion or not. But the bottom line is, they have our terms. They've had them for a while. We have talked, or I have spoken with their attorney about some of those terms. But I really don't want to engage in that until I get their footprint and, uh, and their density study. So, not a big revelation in an update, I'm sorry. But I was told that they anticipate having comments back to us by, in time for me to give a better update by the next meeting. So hopefully we'll receive them this week. Any questions for me?
Can you tell us when they got the terms?
I can't recall. I can look and I can find it, see when I sent that email. And in fact, if we get a pause here, I'll look and answer that.
Can you address whether the lifetime tax exemption is for the initial footprint or the whole footprint?
Yeah, so it's certainly my position and my legal analysis, and I believe NextEra would agree with this, that the original proposed footprint that they have would fit under the exemption. The expansion of that would only fit under the 10-year exemption. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thanks.
Just to maybe clarify and correct me if I'm wrong, the expanded footprint, that tax exempt status would be determined by Administrator Department of Revenue, State of Kansas?
Well, the State of Kansas certainly would make the ultimate decision on that. Now, our proposal to them is, in lieu of taxation under that program, we would agree upon a set amount of money paid over the entire lifetime of the project. So, so yes, that is correct. It's the state. You're correct. The expansion would be under the 10-year exemption. The original would be under the lifetime exemption. But at least the proposal we've made is, in lieu of all of that, pay as they set sum on an annualized basis over the project life.
Okay, so did you say then that if the expanded footprint, the pilot agreement is only for the original footprint?
No, ma'am. The pilot agreement would be for the entire footprint.
So even though they only have a 10-year abatement, the pilot, we don't get any additional or less money because of the 10-year back on the expansion part?
Let me answer that in my own words. So I think I've got your question, but let me answer. If I didn't hit the mark, just back me up. Assuming my analysis is correct, right, I believe they agree with it. You can objectively determine how much tax will be due on, after 10 years for the expanded footprint. So we can objectively put a number on that. What most counties have used for things that are not taxed, either in the 10-year period or in the full lifetime exemption period, is in a contractual agreement to receive money. To offset road or all sorts of reasons for that, that are all good. Our approach is to take this objective, we know what the number is, mix it with the money we would want for the time period that they're not taxed, to come up with a set payment period over the entire lifetime of the project. The idea there being is that you have this consistent stream of income coming into the county that allows the county to better plan, right? Because the majority of the expense on the county's gonna be upfront as the project's coming in and then on the back as the project is going out. So instead of waiting to receive more cash on the end, at least, our theory was to even that out and we thought that would be better for the county. And once again, when that goes out to the citizens, y'all can come back and go, no, we want it a different way. And that's gonna be a discussion. And that's still a bit open. We still haven't, we have not presented a number yet. We want to see the footprint, the density study, before we present a number. So what I outlined is kind of our thought process right now. But once again, once we get that, those items from NextEra, that may change.
So right now, there's nothing additional after 10 years? So the pilot payment would be X amount per year for the lifetime of the project? And that doesn't increase after 10 years because part of it's not exempted?
Well, our vision right now is a set amount of payment equally paid over the entire lifetime of the project, right?
Would you explain lifetime of the project?
Right, so that's a good question. So we've asked them to give us their projection for the lifetime of the project, okay? We're also going to engage an engineering firm to tell us what they think the lifetime of the project is. So we won't just rely on what they're telling us. Hopefully those two numbers match and there's not a big discussion about that, right? At some point, we will agree on what the lifetime of the project is. And then the payments will be spread out. Our vision is to spread out the payments over that period of time. And also, when, at the end of the lifetime of the project, why don't come take down the turbines? Or come back to us and cut another deal, right? That's also assuming that the project goes into the county. I'm saying it based upon that. You guys may make the argument it shouldn't come in at all and that's fine. I'm not dismissing that. I'm just saying if it comes in, this is what we're proposing. Now, the number after the 10 years, I'd have to check the math, but it should be very close to what the county would have received anyway.
On that, and this was maybe more of a local question. When the expanded footprint turbines would be back on the tax rolls after their 10-year abatement is finished, correct?
Year 11.
Yes. So then they would be taxed in whatever districts, whatever taxation district they fall, or multiple taxation districts they fall in at that point? But I'm a little confused because if the payment in lieu of taxes is going to, is it going to prevent them paying future tax when they do come back on the tax rolls or will it? See what I'm asking?
Yeah, and once again, let's go back to as proposed.
I'm sorry, my density.
No, no, you're fine. No, these are great questions. As proposed, there would be no taxing scheme on them other than the contractual agreement to make this annual payment. Then it would be up to the county commissioners on how to split that. I don't know how that will be split yet. That's a bit, certainly, I haven't been part of those discussions. I don't think we've had conceptualized that yet. Maybe the cart and front of horse just a bit on that issue.
So they won't come back on the tax rolls after the 10-year abatement?
That's correct. This will be a payment in lieu of that taxation. So there'd be a pilot for the period that, it wouldn't be subject to taxation. That pilot would also apply after the taxing period.
The pilot is substituting for those 10-year, 11th year on.
That's right. To whatever the end of the life, we agree contractually is the end of the lifetime of this project. And then at the end of that, you know, we've proposed a methodology to either A, come in and take them down and get them out of the county, or B, come back and cut a new deal with the county.
Other questions?
When it's appropriate, will you be able to give us a report on your trip last week?
Well, we can do that most any time, I think. I mean, we talked to...
Gary, if you don't mind. It's just because of the weather. If anyone has any more questions for me, I'm happy to hang around. But if not, the weather's starting to worry me a bit. I'd like to get on the road.
Great, thank you. Anything else specifically for James?
In lieu of what he said right at the beginning about can we cut it because they aren't getting back with you about the density study? In 2012, that's exactly why the half-mile setback was initiated and put into effect because the wind company was not getting back with us and working with us. And that's why the commissioners in 2012 set that half-mile setback. So it happened then. I think it would happen, could happen now.
Could happen now. They're the three that run it.
Yeah, well, just to jog everybody's memory.
Well, and also let me characterize this maybe in a different way. I'm disappointed I don't have those two reports, so let me begin with that. However, I will say, NextEra's worked wonderfully with us to this day. They've been very cordial, very upfront. I felt they've been very straightforward, at least with me and their negotiations. And also they have a very good reputation as a company. So I don't want to leave a characterization that I think they're doing something hinky or doing something weird. I wish I had those studies. It would accelerate the negotiations. To answer your question, yeah. At some point, if we don't get it, you know, I think, okay, well, you know, what's going on? I don't feel that way yet. I feel that we thought we would have it earlier. Then the holiday, everyone thinks they can get stuff done quicker and everything takes a little bit longer. Then you have the holidays and honestly, we're two weeks past the holidays. So I'm not worried yet. I wish I had them so that we could push this on to some conclusions and get them in front of the public. I know you guys are anxious to see and be heard on those issues. But I'm not upset or I'm just a little disappointed on that. Does that maybe clarify my position?
Anything else for Mr. Neal?
I have a question, Mr. Neal. So with regard to your comments about NextEra Energy having a very good reputation as a company, is that from your perspective as far as negotiating with them or is that a general, generally understood perspective?
That's just my opinion. I've never negotiated a deal with NextEra before, nor have I ever represented them. It's just my impression from my experience with them so far.
The reason I ask that question, I attended a presentation last evening here in town and there was a group of citizens from Missouri, two different counties in Missouri from what I understand, that would dispute that comment with regard to their reputation. Because as I understand it from them, NextEra Energy is now engaged in a lawsuit against two separate counties, DeKalb and Clinton County, Missouri, as well as specifically, as I understand it, two townships in DeKalb County. Again, as I understand it, simply because they attempted to establish restrictions that wouldn't allow industrial wind turbines in those areas.
Yeah, and you know, my opinion's based on my discussions with them. I know their attorney as well, the firm that represents them, and I think very highly of that person. He's not my friend or buddy or anything like that, but has a good reputation. You know, you get a sense of at least how things are going and at least right now, certainly they're pretty much as upfront as they can be, in my opinion. With regard to the lawsuits, I am aware of those. And, you know, I don't think I've been shy about the statement. Certainly people have expressed maybe a desire to try to not accept the wind farm. And that's fine. That's a vote by the commissioners. If that's the way the commissioners go. I suspect that'll lead to a fight, a legal fight. That's just my opinion. I don't know that for sure. That answer your question?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to distinguish if that was your intent between your opinion and what...
Yeah, that's absolutely my personal opinion.
So Dwayne, why would the fact that they're trying to protect something that they feel like is legally theirs make them a bad company? I'm lost there.
I didn't say that would make them a bad company. I just, it, I, it just came across to me when Mr. Neal commented that they have a good reputation. I question that as a matter of perspective because according to those people that came over from Missouri yesterday evening, I don't think they would, they would share that opinion.
Anything else for Mr. Neal specifically?
Yeah, just real quick. In all the discussions and talking back and forth with the company, is there anything that they're saying about funding for schools, education, anything in those agreements? Or is that strictly up to the county? How are they wording that? Have they mentioned that at all?
They have not. And frankly, from their perspect, NextEra's perspective, from a negotiating position, it does not matter. From a personal decision, I'm sure they care. Because, you know, they're normal people and we all should care about our schools. They would put that on to the county as to how to distribute that. But, you know, that is a good question because you need to understand that if we go one route, which is when the expansion goes on the tax rolls, that's subject to a certain mill levy, which breaks out the dollars, right? Pardon me, I'm sorry. If we take payments in lieu, right, that's not a mill levy issue. That's a, you know, we get a check, right? As, when I say we, it's the county. And then how that distributed would be a decision of the commissioners. And so it would be at that level. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. I just, you know, if they're RVs or they're homes or they're anything else, they're gonna be, you know, on the tax flow going to school. So I just wondered if they thought that way or...
I got a question. If these farmers that sign up, can they be liable, libelously sued like if a neighbor has a problem with it? The farmer that signed with the contract, can they be sued? Or is it just like NextEra, if there's a problem, you know, with, like, another resident or something like, there's noise? Would the farmer be liable on that too, that signs?
Well, so let me answer it in a way I can. So first off, I don't want to give you personal legal advice. I represent the county. And certainly I don't want to give legal advice on a hypothetical. But let me take your question and broaden it a bit on what we're trying to do. We have certain restrictions in place. Our goal is, in the negotiation, to have certain restrictions in place, like setbacks, decimal levels, stuff like that. Then we have a complaint process in place, that you have the right to make a complaint and that they have to fill that complaint and keep a log of that complaint. The third thing is, they have to try to deal with that complaint on a personal level first. Then, if it can't be dealt with on a personal level, then we've requested that they maintain insurance to pay complaints if it jumps above that level. That's the commissioner's desire to have a method by which the citizens can potentially receive compensation for a legitimate claim. Now, with regard to private to private, I don't know. And even if I had an opinion, I'm not sure I would express it. It's not my place to express it. I should also say that we've asked, and I suspect that they will accept, that they keep a log of complaints and that that log be made public so the public can look at it and see if they're being good corporate citizens in your county or if they're not. So, not quite answering your question, but I did want to give you that overview of at least what our vision of the complaint process would be. If something bad happens or if somebody is just annoyed and wants to express their displeasure.
Is that specific just to NextEra or any industrial wind turbines?
It would be directly for this company, for this project. Certainly for other potential projects, either A, the county would have to pass legislation to regulate that, or B, the county would have to enter into agreements with them like we're doing with NextEra. Does that answer your question?
Does the, say we got into a lawsuit with NextEra, does the county have liability insurance to cover that cost?
I don't know.
Liability for what?
Insurance to cover the cost of a lawsuit.
Of legal fees specifically or...
Wouldn't cover the legal fees, I don't think. What I think it might would cover is if there was a settlement of some sort, there may be some... And that'd be a question we'd have to ask the insurance company, but I don't, there isn't anything on legal fees. I'm almost sure of that.
It would be unusual that a liability coverage, unless someone made a claim against you, that they would cover your legal costs. But I don't know for sure on your part.
Certainly that's pretty easy to check out though, isn't it? I mean, I'm sure you have...
And can, and will.
Thank you.
In answering my question, we'll, we'll find out.
I've heard from other counties that have had liability insurance that did cover it, so that's why I asked.
Go and make that inquiry.
We've got liability insurance, but I don't know about covering that.
Anything else for Mr. Neal?
I have one further question on the decommissioning.
Sure.
Can you tell us if you guys are asking for cash putback in escrow or for a bond to cover your decommissioning cost? And why you chose what you chose?
Yeah, so we've made a request that, we've made a request that they have sufficient financial resources to do that. And in my request, I told them to show us what their thought was. Number one, because I want to know, they may have something already in place that we would find acceptable. Frankly, I put down, for example, either a cash escrow or a bond. I gave those same examples you did. To see what they have in place. You know, it may be sufficient, it may not. And when we get a response to that, then certainly we will respond with, okay. Let's say, for example, it's a bond, which is probably the likely thing, I'm guessing. If that bond is with a good carrier, that is prepaid for the entire term, and the surety behind it, that would be the insurance company backing that bond, is reputable, then that bond may very well work. If it's a bit janky, that's a legal term, by the way, then you're probably gonna want to lean more towards a cash deposit, right? But we won't know that until we actually get some more detail.
And you'll be able to ship the amount of the bond or the cash deposit? I mean, since there's 120 turbines and, you know, $150,000 each to decommission, that's 18 million bucks.
Right, so what we put in there was a dollar figure that we think would be sufficient to properly decommission them. And then you want, if it's a cash escrow, dollar for dollar works, maybe 110%. If it's a bond, you'd want, you know, 110%. works, maybe 110%. If it's a bond, you'd want, you know, 120, 130%, maybe higher. We've also obviously intend to engage an engineering company to check our number, because right now, we're kind of basing that number based upon what other counties have done, so we're guessing. We hope it's a good guess. The engineering company will tell us whether that's a good number or not.
And one last question. If NextEra sells this wind farm to some other wind developer, do those requirements of the term sheet or the agreement transfer with the wind farm?
Yes.
Okay, because the wind farm up on the Nebraska line up here has changed hands three times in seven years, I think. So I just wondered if all of the terms in agreement always go with the sale of that, and so the county wouldn't be left renegotiating with the new company or getting different terms at that point?
Your first statement is correct. It would, it would be applicable to their successors in the signs, the legal term that basically says whoever comes next. Now, can we always guarantee that someone's going to be a good citizen? No. You know, we can't guarantee that they will comply with that, but you know, the document should be sufficient to certainly support a lawsuit if we need to enforce that contractual provision.
In regard to the prepaid bond, would the holder of that bond be the county or the company?
Well...
How does that work? I'm not familiar with that process.
Yeah, and probably I want to, I'll talk generally right now.
Don't reveal anything.
Well, it's not much to reveal, it's, you don't know what you don't know, right? And I don't know what they have, and I don't know what type of bond they would propose. The most likely scenario is you have a performance bond, which is a carrier, a financial institution or an insurance company, guaranteeing the performance of someone to do a thing. And that thing would be to take down the wind turbines at the end of the term. And then that guarantee, the surety, the bond, would have a dollar amount. And then there would be a beneficiary of that, not necessarily a holder, a beneficiary, and that beneficiary would be the county, the person that gets the benefit of the guarantee, that can also ask for performance and demand performance under that guarantee. Now, a lot of people think a bond is like going to a teller at a bank, you know, and you get the money. That won't be the case. I've never seen anyone make a claim on a bond that there wasn't some form of a lawsuit. That's probably an over, overstating that. That's why it's important to make sure that bond is issued by reputable carrier, somebody that, you know, honors the guarantees, as opposed to someone that maybe you don't know a lot about. Otherwise, you want to shift more towards a cash deposit, or some form of escrow, dollar amount. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Yeah, I know that's a bit of a broad question. When we figure out what they have, we'll be able to talk in a lot more detail.
You made me a little nervous when you said that it could require a lawsuit to actually find out the bonds.
Well, and that's just, I can't say that for everybody. That was an over, being overly dramatic. The point is, is that bonds are good. You know, when you do a construction project, you want a performance bond, and you want a bond backing that contractor. A bonding company may argue that, well, no, you know, they did perform. It's not like going to a teller, it's not like going and just drawing out money. I think that's what I wanted to emphasize more than anything.
I think some, myself, the concern is, when we use a bonding process for a construction project or something like that, it's a pretty short-term deal. My concern here is, this is such an extended period of time with possibly change of ownership and a lot of other things. That's the biggest concern that I have about the difference between what we're familiar with more in the bonding world and that, so...
Yeah, you can get bonds that extend over time. Once again, that goes back to, you want a reputable carrier, a company that's been around a long time, the AIGs of the world, as opposed to a regional company that, will that company still be here in 20 years, right?
Thank you.
Sure.
One of the questions that I brought up with some other counties, and that is, is it possible that NextEra would agree to give us money to fund this bond as the county, so that we could say, okay, we know this bond's going to be funded because you're going to give us the money upfront to buy the bond and protect our people? I mean, is that a reasonable...
Sure, absolutely. Whatever thought, either they have to pay for that bond in advance and show us evidence of that, talking from a bond perspective, or they can give the county cash to go acquire that bond from someone they like. Now, there's lots of different ways to skin that cat. The idea is that you have a good bond, the county's the beneficiary, and that bond is backed by a good company, if it goes the bonding route.
Anything else, Mr. Neal, who's going to ice skate to Kansas City? I mean, open roads all the way.
Yeah, y'all see me in the ditch, get your chains, get me to Kansas City, please. Thank y'all. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Top off, top off that coffee in there if you so desire.
No, I'm good, thank you.
So entertain Brad, you staying if you can, a little bit, for any type of legal questions that might arise.
Same true.
Anything else, anyone?
What did you learn Tuesday?
We heard the process from the Pratt County Commissioner, and she had her road and bridge foreman there, and just heard the, that process, if you will. They are, Pratt County is zoned, so they had to go through that process, and was it controversial? Of course. They got through it, they have just, let's see, the Pratt Wind Farm's on the west side, the east side is, I'm trying to remember the name of the, of the wind farm.
Yeah.
One operational...
Big Rockwood, Pratt Wind, Big Rockwood or something like that?
Oh, it's the name of that river and lake, Ninisca.
Ninisqua, there you go.
And I think overall, we can say they were, the process with NextEra, by the way, went relatively smooth, would you guys not say?
Yep.
The road use agreement, that was something that I guess I hadn't thought through enough, but maybe you posed the question, how much did the county receive from that? Well, the county did not receive dollars for that. The engineering firm had just, you know, that road, here's what it looks like before they start construction, and here's what it looks like after they're done. NextEra paid for all that. So, the money did not funnel through Nima Hawk County, or Pratt County in this case. They just paid for it. They did a few, they had a couple of bridges that were a nightmare, and they needed new ones, they were going to put them in, but they can't do that Saturday afternoon. So they moved in with a bunch of heavy equipment on several different occasions, it sounded like, and put in tubes, covered them up, used them, to the project completion, tore them back out, and build a bridge. So I think that guy, now, he did, he did learn quite a bit from the first project to the second project, and, and one of those, I think mainly was that...
Engineer on site.
Right, the engineer on site. He was, the road and bridge guy was the go-to guy on the initial one, and he got absolutely nothing else done.
Overwhelmed.
Yeah, you can imagine, I mean, what that would be. So, he was tickled, if you will, to turn that over to an engineering guy who was on-site the entire time. All the calls went to him, to the engineer. So, that was a major difference in the two there.
NextEra paid for that, then?
Yes.
Which engineering firm did they retain?
Kirk and Michael.
Kirk and Michael.
Were they satisfied with their services?
I think so.
Yes, I think, yes. Again, they learned quite a bit.
They did learn a lot from the first deal.
Is that the same firm that you guys were looking into?
They've been here, yes. One of the two that's been here.
Were they zoned before the first project, Pratt County?
You know, I didn't ask them. I think they were.
They were, but not for commercial wind necessarily. Nothing in their zoning dealt with commercial wind.
They put more teeth into it on the second one, got the setbacks further. Most counties that we talked to weren't zoned properly when the first wind farm, for say, come in, or, or they heard next door, and now they went back and got their rules put in place. Because once those leases get signed, it's hard to go back. You can put stuff in place, but...
What were their setbacks?
The second one was 2,500 feet, but I'm not sure what the first, I don't know the first one. But they did get 2,500 feet in the second. And I'm not sure if that was just non-participating, because the participating, I mean, they got a contract with them, they can negotiate, I guess, whatever. If they wanted 1,500 feet in their house, they can probably put them there.
What size of wind panels are those out there? Same size as these going up here?
They're 2.3s, I believe, the second one. The first one was 1.6, so they were a lot smaller. The last ones, though, were 2.3. And I think they were projecting ours to be 2.5, so it'll be somewhere.
Are they having trouble with wind noise and all that kind of jazz out there, or not?
I suppose yours is going to have that. I mean, you will. There's somebody not going to like the wind noise. I mean, whether it's there or where it's not, I mean, just like last night, that guy said, well, Friday night, you know, it was terribly noisy, and that's not for us to dispute. You know, we just need to hear that.
Now, you talked about, James Neal talked about it being a public complaint list. Did they talk about what's on the list out there as far as what kind of complaints they've had?
I don't know if I asked you that. I don't know if we got, if we did, I don't remember getting that detailed with them about that. You heard James address that. I mean, I have on my notes, just, the Pratt County, the non-participant, 2,500 foot setback.
Is that from the residents, or from the property line? Do you happen to...
Don't know.
Okay.
They, I don't know.
What was their terrain like? Was it similar to ours, or more level like ours?
It really ain't comparable. You know, there's a lot of things so different. Of course, you get out in western Kansas, the owners of the farm have left the town, and the people that live on the farm are their hired hands. A lot of places, they have very little houses in the country where they drive to Wichita, or someplace to go to work, because they're just not a district. So the people that are on the farm live there. You know, I mean, if you understand what I'm saying, they don't live out, like we have here, you know, a lot of the people that live out in the country, they have the 10 acres or 3 acres or whatever, they work in town. Out there, most of the people that live on the farm work on the farm. Is that... I think that would be, yeah.
The way I understood what they...
Until you get to Reno County. Yeah. Yeah, now Ron Hurst, you know, gave us some information on that, but, and they're more populated, but...
Do we have any information on any of the Invenergy, or any of the other firms that are looking into, as far as footprints or anything like that, that you know?
Not heard a word.
Connor was here. Is Connor still over there?
Yeah.
Connor from Invenergy was here earlier, in the hallway.
Okay. Oh, okay, I didn't...
Appreciate my comment, Bobbs.
Well, you weren't talking about my company.
Back to our road trip, if you will. We stopped in Ron, what is it, Dennis Hurst?
John Hurst.
Stopped in Patch, had a cup of coffee with him. It was only him, or not only him, but he was, so... And he's a commissioner. Right. They're a little bit unusual in Reno County, in the northwest corner of Reno County, if you look, it's just south of Corvair and National Wildlife Refuge. So, need I say more? There, I mean, nobody will touch that, if you will. They're in that process right now. Getting three different wind farms confused now. Where are they in Reno County? Southeast district. You know, southeast Reno is where...
Little River area.
Mm-hmm.
Little River area. South, southeast and southwest.
But they have a lot of people who work out of Wichita living out there, in little acreages, it sounds like.
What else?
Did Mr. Hurst share with you that he was making recommendations to Joe Seifert, the US House, or the House of Representatives Energy Committee?
To what, again, Lynette?
Joe Seifert and Ron Hurst are friends, and he is making recommendations, he's the commissioner for Joe, and he's making recommendations at the state level for legislation around, so that the state helps counties out with some of this, to be discussed this year. I just know that because Ron reached out to me.
In the form of a bill, do you know?
I think there's discussion around what, they're gathering information right now.
Right.
And to put together some sort of a bill that the state would help...
He talks some about that, but, but I think that we've got a meeting tomorrow with the Attorney General, and he's going to be there, Ron's going to be there, we're going to be there, Brown County's going to be there, you know, kind of backfinding, and basically, you know, to, to see if we can't get some teeth into when Invenergy or NextEra, when the wind companies come into your bedroom, or your bedroom, your kitchen, and start talking these terms and these contracts, you know, is there any, is there a time limit to when you can get out and think like that? I mean, there's, because if you look at ours, most of our contracts, I think, were signed during harvest time, and most of the people probably didn't have time to step and think about it, I think. You know, and I think now they're waiting for planting season to come around. I don't know, I'm just, my opinion.
Well, he shared his recommendations, and I think that would be a good starting point for the county to consider, especially when negotiating with the different companies that are coming into the county.
Yes, and thank you, Lynette. I got all that information, I printed it all out, several of the deals, and we had a nice visit with Ron, you know. He'd like to meet you, he'd like to put a face with you.
Well, maybe someday when I go that way.
Would you guys have the setbacks for residents now, setting, and it's not set in stone or anything yet, right? You guys are just working on that?
Still in negotiations.
But you don't know, what are you guys proposing? Do you know that?
I heard the other night, we're proposing 2,500 feet.
And is that true?
Might be.
Can't you just say...
Currently under negoti, in negotiation.
I think at this point in time, we really need to see the engineering plan before that can really be determined.
So what would their engineering plan have to do with providing a conservative setback?
It'll, it'll show, we need a density study, which will indicate, I mean, where the residences are compared to where they, where they want to put their wind turbines, where they plan to place them. They may come back and say, hey, we can do this with 4,000-foot setback, we're good. And they may come back and say, we can't go any more than 1,400. So we have, we don't know. But until we get that, it's hard for us to really negotiate that.
Again, I ask, I would ask, what does their engineering plan have to do with establishing what you, as a county, feel like is a conservative, safe setback for non-participant residents?
I can't speak for these gentlemen, but I think the discussion has been that the more information we have, the better prepared... the more information we have, the better prepared we are to negotiate that, that number.
Any question you're asking, let's pass a resolution and go to 5,000 feet. You know, and have to be carefully.
I'd just like to comment, the 2,500 feet even disturbs me. If you go over to Germany or listen to what they're doing over there, they have now mandated or passed a law. They can't be any closer than 1.2 miles and they've been in this a whole lot longer than we have. They know the consequences. 5,000 feet isn't half a line.
Yeah, well, I had a guy grinding hay for me last night. They must have quite a few, you know, looked at my dillards or something, but he said they can hear them two miles away. So, I don't know how big they are or anything, but I'm sure these are probably bigger. Because they probably threw them up several years ago.
I just want to comment around. I understand this is all about the soldier code project right now because that's really all that you have information on. But allowing the, a density study for that particular small area to determine what you're going to do, because it sets precedence for the rest of the county, does it not? Didn't you tell us already that you were gonna use that as a, or, or Mr. Neal did? That was what you were gonna use in negotiating with Invenergy or anybody else that came calling later? It just seems to me that if we just only focus on the density study of that very small area, that it opens wide the door for us to get stuck later on where anybody could come in and put 300 turbines. The Pony Express project's supposed to be 300 turbines more. And the density on that will be significantly different than 120 turbines in that little area.
I think I can say that we're, we're, that's all part of the big picture that we're working on.
I was just, I just asked that you be careful about getting yourself in a little lock.
I agree wholeheartedly. We, we, we're working on the whole picture.
I got a question. Has the, uh, the county looked at, um, a firm to do a study and analysis, a third-party analysis on what is acceptable for setbacks, what is safe for, uh, someone that does have residents close to these? Have we looked at that? Because we got a lot of numbers, but no one's actually went to a third party that's not Nextera or Invenergy. Or someone that's gonna be right there and actually say, this is what is okay and this is what isn't okay. And take their advice and maybe lean more on them and that firm versus what we hear hearsay and what their hearsay is and actually look and say, this is okay. You know, with energy, with engineers and, uh, healthcare professionals. And, and look at it that way and then maybe negotiate off those terms and not a density study. And just say, county position is X, Y, and Z feet because our healthcare professionals and the people did the study says this is a safe thing, shouldn't have any problems. We won't have residents living with each other, you know, it would be good for the county. The health of the county isn't always a monetary value. Um, we all live with each other, you know, good fences make good neighbors. We don't want a Hatfield McCoy situation in our county where we're all tearing each other's throats. So, something maybe to look at and that way everybody's kinda comfortable with it. And let a third party state what's okay and not have the two parties that are be involved state what's okay. And have you guys kinda regulate that instead of getting pulled two directions? Have you guys looked at that?
There's a study from North Carolina that, and, and it says this Knopper and Olson have, have really concluded that although there is evidence to suggest that wind turbines can be a source of annoyance, to some people, there is no evidence demonstrating a direct casual link between living in proximity of wind turbines and more serious psychological health effects while they go on and on and on. But, yeah, is there any? I don't know. There's, there's, I, I got, that's what I printed last week on that and I, uh, I agree, you know, there's pretty hard to find.
Because there's, there's other ones too that state that if you're within so far, that's an issue. And every person's different. I mean, restaurants have standards. You gotta tell them if it's been cooked with peanuts or around peanuts, right? Not everybody's allergic to peanuts, but you still have to state it and be regulated for it, right? I mean, as a governing body, you've gotta do both. You know, some people are different.
To me, there's, there are studies that are gonna show this and there are studies that are gonna show this for any given issue. Where do you draw the line? It's hard.
And some of the things I've looked at, the area. You know, if you're in flat area versus rolling hills, it all makes a difference. And so, but one thing that we don't know and can't draw, uh, is that information, you know. And that's part of what we're wanting to know from the Attorney General is, you know, is Kansas put us into this deal? You know, it's, but I understand where they're coming from after doing some talking and researching with them. They're pretty well sure they're not gonna let any more coal plants go in.
Yeah.
And they're pretty sure there are no more nuclear plants going in. But the thing I contend is, is, okay, wind energy can't produce hardly enough to keep this block in energy consistently for any stretch of imagination. So, that's the problem we got to come up with and we looked at a couple of, uh, solar plants, solar plants, yeah. Like 30 acre. And I mean, it's 30 acres of nothing but solar panel. You might have a few goats that could run around in there, but that'd be about it. You know, I mean, it's just, they're about yay far off of ground, just solid.
Have you, uh, have you guys thought about, um, offering, uh, Nextera to help, as well as they paid for an attorney, but, uh, maybe help the county pay for that study and hire a firm to do that, because it's a third-party firm and actually come out and survey the property here, our land area with the hills that we have and the effects that those might have and actually have them do a study on the county. Not a flat area or something that's by an ocean or has limestone or versus granite area or something in our county, maybe propose it to them and see if they'd be willing to do it. I mean, if, you know, if they're a good partner, if they wanna partner with us, I mean, that might be something they might be willing to do, but it never hurts to ask, right? What's it gonna say is no?
One comment I would make, um, while we don't, and everyone knows that there are varying opinions on what's close enough. What we do have in Neimhaug County are a small group of residents that have lived near turbines smaller than these for eight years. And I, I think it'd be foolish to ignore that because these are people we know. And I see one of them sitting over here. I dug, I mean.
Yeah, a mile's plenty close.
But you also, that's not just your opinion.
Right.
You, the small group of people that live around there, you did talk to, right?
Yep, I personally talked to all of them. And we all agreed that, uh, they're, they're.
So, you talked to everybody within a mile up there?
Of the east batch of the east batch.
Of all of them. Anybody within a mile, they'd all agree with you, a mile's way too close.
Well, they all agreed that a mile was.
Everybody in that general area.
Yes, sir. Yep, agreed that the mile, we're okay with a mile, you know, we're, they're, and again, I'm, I'm a pretty good example of that because I actually built my house with them there, you know, and, and in my, uh, and again, I stated as, that, you know, I did that with, within, with the knowledge that there was a wind farm there and they were a mile away and it wasn't a, it wasn't an issue. Now, uh, my concern is the, the point of it that I didn't count on was the possibility of having them closer. Had I, had I, I wouldn't have built one, I guarantee, if they were within, uh, you know, any closer than, definitely any closer than a half mile. But, yeah, I wouldn't have even entertained the idea at that stage.
But those turbines are smaller too?
Yes, sir.
Half a blazewake.
Yes, sir. And we can't hear.
A house or a mile from your property line?
Mile from my house, yep. At one point, I think it's 1.17 miles from my house is the, is the closest one and, uh, and it is, it, we can hear them. I mean, I've, I've told, you know, we, outside, we can't hear them inside. I, I can't imagine living with it where you can hear them inside. I just, I would not want that for anybody, I really.
There's another important piece, though, that everyone in that group you talked to, another closest residents, all live south of the turbines, except your folks.
Yes, sir.
Everybody else lives south.
Even my parents live.
Yeah, they're generally.
A little bit south, yeah.
The point being that in the, when you're outside in the summertime.
You don't.
If a turbine is south of you instead of north of you, it does, it alters how that impacts you. It's just logic.
Makes a huge difference because like now, this time of year, it's amazing, especially since all this is taking place. We've, we, uh, we've been, I, I think, a lot more aware of it, but, and just taking, taking the time to stop and try to listen, you know, to listen and see where they're at that day, but there's a lot of mornings when we go out when the wind's out of the north, northwest and, and they're loud. I mean, they're, they're pretty loud. But again, you know, in, in the summertime, when the wind's out of the southwest and, and they're north of us. And they're, yeah, they're far enough away that they're not a, they're not a horrible nuisance, but again, if they were, uh, if they were a half mile south, southwest of us where we had to deal with that on a constant basis, I just, I just don't think that that's, I don't think that's fair.
Just, just to throw this out, not as the county attorney, but as a citizen, because my wife asked me this question. We're really close to the wind farm in Marshall County. Have we surveyed those who live around the turbines in Marshall County, what their opinion is?
It depends on the conversation and it varies because it's, that's the, the thing is that the research that I've looked at says that a percentage of the population is all that will be really adversely affected. So, somewhere between 10 and maybe 20 or 25 percent. So, I, I know of one situation where one member of the family is really troubled and the rest of the family is not in the Marshall County. Rick, you live, you don't live close enough to them, but you farm around them?
We farm around them and they are loud and the flicker effect you see quite often. My brother lives just a pinch over a mile from them and he has the flicker effect. I know one guy that lives really close and he would like to hear his speaking with them. He's Dr. Freyro. He's pretty close.
And I just came from over there. It's kind of interesting. They haven't been running the last two days, which I'm not sure why, but it just goes back to that. And they're not running again today over there. So, there is, yeah, I guess if, if we're gonna live around them when they're not running, it's a great thing. They don't make much noise when they're not running.
Well, they're a lot different to train. The train goes through and it's gone.
Right.
The windmills, it's, it's constant. And I mean, that's the thing that we must remember.
And it's interesting. When you're out, like I say, when you're outside, like if we're outside, if we're having a conversation, you don't, you don't really notice it, but if you're just out there just to sit and just kinda enjoy, uh, enjoy your property and, and it, it's amazing how noisy they are, how, how constant, like you say, it is.
I have a video on my phone that shows standing under a windmill and the noise from the windmill and there's a train in the background. And you cannot hear that train whatsoever. Totally drowns it out.
I'm not sure we need a, a study to see if they really affect them. I, I talked with a parent that they took their son up to Mayo's and they used lights and shadow flicker to bring on, Mayo's uses those things to bring on seizures so they can monitor.
Oh, wow, really?
Do we need a study to prove that? I think, I think that's pretty, and this is a parent that took their child up there to monitor.
That meeting with the Attorney General with that information from that meeting made in public, or is that kind of a closed deal that you have tomorrow? Do you know?
Well, I think that'd be nonetheless an open public information. I would assume so.
Don't know yet.
Do you guys have any of the population that resides in that west Pratt farm?
It's, it, it is minimal and if you look at the Pratt County behind Duane there, you'll see that Pratt, uh, Pratt County is somewhat, I don't know if unusual is the right, but, but Pratt, city of Pratt, it's right in the middle of the county. And they are, uh, relatively, I don't know, sparsely, sparsely populated the entire rest of the county. Now, some of that is, I talked about, um, the northwest part of the county was, I don't know what they refer to it, it's sandy. And it's just, it's not good to build a house on. It's not good for much, if you will.
Was he talking about sugar sand? There's, there's a term down in there that they call.
Is there? No, I don't remember them specifically, but.
A boy drove a truck out in that once and got stuck in the sand, much to my surprise.
Well, they talked about blowouts and, you know, there, you get in the sand hills in Nebraska that, that it, it blows out a place, size a room every once in a while. So, it, it is sandy now. I can't remember the question now.
The populate, the reason I bring it up is because I think Lynette mentioned earlier, when, where, each county is kinda unique. Some are similar, some are not. So, I just think we have to be, keep that in mind when we start comparing what situation in Pratt County or Reno County to here. We, we just have to kinda know what our situation is.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the only thing you can come up with is people, you know, and we talked to one guy down there that got a wind turbine right outside his house and, but he's getting paid for it. And he says, I don't even know it's there. He said, I don't know what you people, I don't know why they're worried because he says, I, I, I don't even know it's there.
And the research would support that.
I know that. I know that. And that's what I mean. That's, that's the difference.
You just can't tell ahead of time is the problem.
But, but now, if his grandson or granddaughter comes and has problems, will he change his mind? Will that cause an effect? I don't know. But I don't believe Pratt is comparable to anything we got here. Outside of the fact that we learned the engineering, we need to make sure we got an engineer on. We need to learn some of the things from their problems that we had in the process. That's what we're, I'd say, our biggest take home from that deal.
I agree.
Gentlemen, I, I have a recorder on 11 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks, Brian.
You bet.
Questions, comments?
I just have one. My, my questions and comments are, are way different than these people that are, you know, putting up with these in their front yards, but, uh, have, have you guys had a chance, and maybe it's too early to talk, but have you had a chance to think about how we're gonna adequately fund schools with some of this money if that happens or anything that could happen? Or are you still in the developing state? Because I heard you say you're still negotiating developing, but, you know, did Pratt take care of, do they, do they put money in their schools? I know some don't, um, you know, there's a couple that do.
They didn't put anything and I, I talked to, uh, Mr. Dennis down in, and, you know, and he says it won't affect the schools at all. The problem we're gonna have with schools is number one, if you have families that move out of the district because of the windmills, that will take, what is it, they get 80, $8,000 or whatever per student. That will take that much away from them. Okay, as well as if you get new students in, you know, that, that adds that much. That is gonna be the effect on that. Now, if, if we wanna do something, that's what we'll have to decide, you know, uh, but yeah, there's, uh, a lot of different ways to look at that.
True.
But, uh, and he's gonna, he's, he's volunteered to come or have a conference call with us when we get closer and I thought we'd have Mr. Neal because he said there's some things that we need to pay attention to if we give any money to the school districts, how it needs to be channeled. He said, you don't wanna put it in there as a payment in lieu of taxes. You don't wanna do this. There are certain things you cannot do, so. I don't know. Uh, well.
And he's also under the impression that these, when these turbines are gonna go back on the tax rolls. I don't think he's aware.
No.
Because that will change, I mean, that, that will long-term affect our schools.
No, I told him this was, this was lifetime exempt. And he understands that part of it and we talked about that.
But you're right. Part of them could go 10-year exempt and then it could cause a problem down the road, so we have to look at that. Such as it is, Pratt County, uh, their, uh, revenue generated, if you will, via a pilot agreement went into their general fund and was distributed. via a pilot agreement, went into their general fund, and was distributed as directed by their commission. And that, I think, is what we have found, is what most counties have done. I think we can say that, can we not?
Now, he did say down there at Pratt that NextEra made a token donation to the school for $10,000, which, you know, if they lose one student, that's a, that's a worst, so, you know, I mean...
That's slap in the face, actually, is what that is.
I mean, that, that part of it, you know...
I just, and it's not, like I said earlier when he was here, if those were homes going in, or those were RVs being purchased, or whatever, whatever percentage that that is would help fund our schools. And that's what I'm looking at, is, I don't even know the footprint, you know, and, but, I'm just thinking somehow, some way, there's gotta be a percentage, because we're still running business, and we're still taking care of kids, and so... And I know that's something you're thinking about, I just was wondering if maybe you had opportunity to discuss that.
As I'm sure everybody in this room knows, wind turbines in Kansas became a lifetime exemption by Governor Bill Graves, who took office in 1/20 of '95. It's a long time ago, that we're dealing with today.
I think Rossville, Rossville might be the only school that I know that has a pilot agreement with a wind farm. If I, you know, I think they negotiated their own, or they...
I think there's a couple out west that are...
Well, there's one in southeast Kansas that gives money to the school. We talked to...
And there's one, yeah, there's one south of Kansas that the county didn't want any money. They just, they just had to make the pilot agreement to the school.
Which they ran into a transmission line, or pipeline, or something that gives them $2 million a year.
Yeah.
They had other issues that...
So there's really no benefit to our schools at this point in time? And there's no benefit to, like, like the power plant, nuclear powered plant down there, is paying regular taxes. So they have really nice schools, and they have really nice county infrastructure, and parks, and libraries, and all of that, because they're paying taxes like any business in the county.
That is correct.
They're also considered public utility, where these are not considered public utility.
Can I actually go outside of that original boundary for sure?
This, of course, is the original footprint, and this is an expanded footprint. And back to, we don't know what that footprint is. And until we get that, and see a density study, both that they have assured us they would provide, we don't have yet.
You and I would sit here and say no, but they say they can, so I don't have any idea.
Majority rules.
So, yes, what is, what does Mr. Neal say? Is he, has he weighed in on where...
He don't know yet. He's waiting for them, and again, that comes back to the density study and the footprint, see? Because we don't know if they're even considered outside of that initial footprint. If they are, then, you know, there's some problems there.
Well, I live down in that first footprint, and if it goes in down there, I'm not gonna be happy. But I sure as heck don't want to go any further north either. You know, at least, at least I might have a chance to be able to move out and still work on a farm without them things around. I can maybe sell my house, or burn it down, or whatever. And then I can maybe move north and work on the farm, where the farm is, but, I mean, they're gonna keep moving everywhere.
Well, Arlen, just to be clear, there's wind leases in every township in this county.
Right, yeah, I know.
Don't burn your house down yet.
Where you go, you know, like now, if you want to sell your house before they move in, can't go anywhere, because they got everything leased. So you're either gonna have to live with it, or, yeah, well, just one goes.
And that goes back on the individual farmers that are signing these leases. You know, you're throwing that question at us at the table here, but...
You're right.
We really can't control those guys, or those cop guys.
It's not really your fault either, you kind of gotta go back on farmers, and... Like one guy said to me the other day, I asked him, I said, "Would you sign up?" "Yeah, I signed up." I said, "Well, you getting anything on you?" And he said, "Well, I don't know yet." He said, "I don't know if anybody knows yet." And he asked me if I signed up, I said, "No," I said, "We don't think, you know, we want to sign what a contract was written that close to the house." And he goes, "Well, it's just like having homes or cavils, if you don't like it, just move to town." And that's their attitude.
I know. I've been told that.
Other questions or comments?
I think I'll answer this.
I don't know if you know it, but in the state of Iowa, I personally know the guy, they're starting to tear him down. I don't know how long they've been there. They want him to buy a machine on his backhoe to bust out the cement. They got somebody to take all the stuff, but they want him to bust, buy a machine on his backhoe to bust out the cement, I guess, I don't know, maybe four foot, somebody said. He had to cut the rebar off, and then he's supposed to find the dirt to cover it back up. And if they build any more windmills, they're not gonna build them in the same spot, they're gonna build them another spot. So are they gonna, someday, are you gonna have all your farm under cement underneath of it?
Part of the agreement that we're currently working on...
Honestly, I personally know this guy.
Decommissioning...
And he hasn't decided yet to buy this thing, because it's gonna cost a lot of money. He didn't say how many they wanted tore down, but this is in the state of Iowa, I personally know the guy.
Decommissioning is a huge part of what we're currently negotiating. Yet to be deterred. Yeah, Galen?
The question I have is expanded footprint. Let's just assume for a minute that the lifetime exemption is limited to the original footprint, and the expanded is a 10-year. Does that expanded footprint then require a new conditional use permit application in that whole process? Or do you, is that no?
Don't know that yet either, I don't think. Yet to be determined.
All pinching on what you get?
Yes, yes.
So I have a question. So negotiating this decommissioning agreement, I would assume, but I don't know, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, you're looking into that essentially to protect...
The landowner.
Did sign the lease? I would say Nemaha County. Decommissioning, who are we trying to protect? By negotiating, I mean, in my opinion, it's Nemaha County.
Nemaha County?
Same way we're trying to protect Nemaha County for setbacks and all that. I mean, it's all part of the negotiation, so in my opinion, it's protecting Nemaha County.
Okay, see, I wondered if you were, if you were trying to protect the landowner, that lease, to put them there.
Oh, you can look at it that way, I guess.
Protect everybody. You're putting the cart before the horse, because I want to tell you what, in the first place, they gotta come up with a footprint and prove to us that they're really gonna put them here in the first place, before we even have to worry about a road agreement or a decommissioning. Because if they ain't gonna put them here, why, the other two are null and void. But I agree, you know, once, once they decide what they're gonna do, then we have to get into the decommissioning and make sure that it comes. And part of the things that we gave Mr. Neal was, number one, like, he was talking about the dirt. You know, I, my question was, is where's the dirt? What are they gonna do with the dirt that they're taking out of these holes? That they're building? Where do they go with that?
I went to one meeting, he said they might use some of it, the estuary, they try to give it away, or put it in a road they're gonna build. But I'm, my question is, if they tear them down like they're gonna do in Iowa, where are they gonna get this dirt?
I know, because we run into that problem every day.
About a hole four foot deep?
We build bridges, and we need dirt, and we can't get, you know, we have a hard time getting dirt from, you know, the people here in Nemaha County, you know, to put, to build the ramps and do the things we need to do. I can't imagine where they're gonna come up with enough dirt to fill these holes and make it four foot deep. And that was the other question, that one part of the thing that we've been addressed, but that again goes with this decommissioning.
The only reason I ask was because if, if part of the concern, one component of the concern is to protect the landowner, then wouldn't that same application go, or wouldn't it apply to protecting the landowner as far as a setback, if he so prefers? And I don't know that, I don't know that that's a concern of any of those that sign leases, but it seems it certainly applied to those that have it.
It's my understanding that the contracts are, they don't address decommissioning very much, that the landowner, the farmer, or whoever makes with NextEra in there. They really don't say, "We're gonna take it down, you know, and this, we're gonna pay all the expenses." They don't have all that in there, but...
We're gonna try to make this as easy as the next set of commissioners can handle. Hopefully, we do the right thing here, that they don't have to go through near as much of this, let's put it that way. You know, I mean, it's all good information, but in the end, I think Dennis said it best, we don't know yet. Your witnesses give you answers, and we just don't know yet.
Have you considered the amount of rock that it's gonna take?
Yep, yeah, we know it's about a half million tons.
And where's that all gonna dump?
They ready talk to Martin Marietta and the Hams, I mean, that's all, that's all on their part of it, but our road bridge guy has a ready talk to both of them also, make sure we get our fair share.
And I can raise the price to all the townships out here?
I posed the question to the Pratt County people, that very question, and she said, "No," because they haul every, every rock for that, both those projects from Wichita.
So how does that help local businesses then?
That's the question I have.
I mean, sir, I'm just quoting ads, and how this is helpful to local businesses, but if all the rock came from Wichita, Pratt, that didn't help any Pratt County businesses.
They don't have, well, Pratt County is why. They don't have rock in that county, so they had to truck it in. That's the difference.
They did say, though, that with the road agreements, the only people they had trouble with was their local people.
Cutting routes.
The local people, it was hauling rock and concrete and whatever, they said they was the ones they had trouble with.
Cutting routes.
Not following the routes and doing the things they was... Listen, this is my county, I can do with it what I want to do, and...
All we gotta do is take this short time, we can get there four miles quicker.
And so, you know...
Yeah.
But no, they have to bring most of their rock down there in on train cars. And they unload it at some, some big place in Wichita, and then they go in there and truck it out.
But artificially inflating rock for everybody, we have considered, and that is a, definitely a consideration that we are negotiating, addressing, put it that way.
It's hard to control that, because you got these rock companies out here that, you know, they see the demand, so they're gonna raise the price, which in return is gonna affect all of your townships in the county. And the way it looks, out of a bit winter, might need a lot of rock this spring. You know, talk about economic impact, that is one, it's a negative impact.
Well, you'd think the rock companies would say, "If we can sell that much more rock, the price ought to go down," but...
Don't work that way.
Don't work that way.
Why don't they just pay them, and we have to work after rock?
We can do that, if you're willing, if the, if the people are willing, we can do the handle that, that's...
We got some other appointments that we're gonna have.
Yeah, anything else? We've got a couple other appointments, a couple more questions.
Where you guys, I mean, you got the setbacks you're negotiating, and whatever that is, but what about airstrips? Have you guys thought about airstrips? How far we want these away from areas?
All of that is dictated by the Federal Aviation Regulation. Regulation.
We see the footprint. We will, when we get it, we're gonna be in contact with these guys. I mean, we're not gonna sit here and say, "We know what it ought to be." We're gonna want their input, we're gonna, we're not gonna sit by and say, "Hey, a mile from your place, and that's it." No, we want your input too. We're not sitting here saying we're gonna dictate that.
That, that part of it is, is they have to be permitted. Can they put a wind turbine out right at the end of, on vinyl of any given runway? Absolutely not. They have to be...
So we'll see where that all is.
So many feet.
Does that apply to private, private as well? Does that apply to private runways as well?
That I don't know, but I would assume probably so.
I don't know.
I'm sure any public runway.
The FAA steps in with 499 feet, so magically their towers are 498. And I've been informed by NextEra that they can put them anywhere they want to.
But we still have a final say-so also, somewhat, I mean...
They told me, including off the end of my runway, so...
Yeah, well, I got news, we got news for other people too, but like I said, we will not do anything until, there's gonna be a lot of questions, and there's gonna be, we're gonna be in an open, public forum, but I think we would want some sort of meeting with you, per se, on that issue, with our attorney, and see where that goes to, you know? When we get the footprint, where we see the towers, and what you feel that they ought to be. Because you've already sent us stuff, you know, so we're not done.
Yeah, these people that set the plates on the wind towers are not, local people are not in order, sitting in an office someplace and saying, "That, that looked like a good spot. That's where we want it, because the wind's best right there." I think from there on, it's negotiated, but...
Yeah, once, until, again, until we get the footprint, I mean, who knows about leases at the end, both ends of the runway? Nobody knows that, sitting here, or I don't.
Do we have a timeline on this, any of this?
Oh, yeah, it was by the end of '18. But they, yeah, we just don't have it yet. We don't know why, we haven't received any of those documents.
The ball's in their court, and they're the ones that set the dates and all that, and they're extending them dates, so we can only assume that either one, they ain't got enough land lease, something else, I don't know. Only...
Our attorney said he's not too really worried about that, right now.
So do we get as much time as they've had?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The process will not be hurried.
No.
We're gonna miss you guys, this is all...
They're talking about this side of the desk, by the way. I think the filing deadline for the next election is what we're getting. Go ahead and announce that, right here.
I'm believing it's June 1st.
There you go, June 1st, make a note.
Not until 2020.
So, any one or two more questions, comments? We've got some other stuff we need to do. And Alvin? Dave?
You talk about the negotiations. The negotiation, is that, when will that be handed to them? Or when will you go into the negotiating? Has it started, or...
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, whether or not you listen to anything Mr. Workburger has to say or not, if it means anything to you, you need, we all need to remember, number one, he's talking a mile. Number two, he's talking mills that are half the size of what we're talking about now. So regarding negotiations, I would say you need to start out with miles, nothing less. If you're talking thousands of feet, we're already screwed.
Yep.
So they're saying one mile with a mill half the size. So that's one mile, we need to be more than a mile.
Very good. Anything else?
Gary, is there any, any further talk about zoning, or any other kind of legal resolution? Would it, would, I think I asked this the last time I was here, to set back, establish guidelines for the county, so we weren't talking about this every year?
I think that will be included in any kind of document that we might sign...
So we're not just talking about a council sheet, we're talking about something, established resolution, or a legal, something for the county.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Or so, or whatever you decide.
We are in the process. Part of the process. Because we love all you guys, but no offense, we don't want to do this again in a year or so.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. We get the big bucks for this, that's correct.